All right, welcome to our planning board meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 8th. We're here at the Town Hall Meeting Room 124. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 38, Section 20, notices hereby given that the planning board meeting will meet today. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person at One Liberty Lane Norfolk, Mass or by the remote Zoom connection that's been provided. Please note that all in-person meetings will... The in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if any technological problems interrupt the remote connection. With that, we're going to go around the room, do attendance. When I see your name, just say aye and we'll move on. So we've got Chad Peck.
Aye.
Dan Seager.
Aye.
Chris Monfort, aye, the Chair. Vice Chair Gary Sullivan.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
Rich McCarthy.
Aye.
Betsy Fajol.
Here.
And our Associate Gary Searle. All right, with that, we're going to go into our first public hearing. 7:00 PM, One Pine Street. Dan, can you read that in, please?
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law Section 40A and the Norfolk zoning bylaws Sections 310 to 6.11 and 310, 6.9. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in Room 124 Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass regarding a site plan application and stormwater management permit for a property located at One Pine Street in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, One Pine Street Realty Trust of Canton, Mass, is proposing modifications to the existing site and building for the installation of two new 15,000 underground fuel storage tanks, three multiple pump dispensers, and an associated steel overhead canopy. Floor modifications and site improvements including drainage, utilities, and landscaping for a proposed gasoline filling station. The applicant is also requesting a special permit to allow the installation of a new internally illuminated, double-sided, freestanding sign larger than 12 square feet with a maximum height of 15 feet. The property is located in the C1 zoning district, reference assessor's map 19 Block 81, Lot 13. The application and plans are here that are available for public inspection on the Town of Norfolk website or in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so Rich, who do we have here with us today?
Online is Hal.
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And the applicant.
And the applicant.
So just before I turn it over to Hal, there before you tonight for the gas station site plan approval at One Pine Street, it will require a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's scheduled for the 16th of July.
That's for the use.
For the use, yes. They're before the Conservation Commission tomorrow evening, July 9th, for a notice of intent. So the objective for tonight is just to give you an overview of the project, take your comments. Beta needs to perform their peer review on the site plan aspect. They've done stormwater. And so really get your general comments, public comments, et cetera, and then be prepared for the August meeting, really kind of dive into substantive issues. Okay. I'll turn it back over to you, Hal.
Okay, great, thank you, Richard. Good evening, and Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Hal Chuba. I'm a consulting engineer with Offices and Department of Massachusetts, and I here represent the applicant on this special permit application. As you read into the rec...into the record, this is a special permit for the...well, actually, we're asking for three, four different special permits, and they all have to do with signage, and one has to do with the waiver for the landscape requirements. But before I start my presentation, I just wanted to let you know that we've been working with the town for the past seven or eight months on this project. You know, we had at least three or four informal meetings with the different departments. We took their input, they had some concerns. We go back to the drawing boards and we incorporate all...address all these concerns. Plus, you have a peer review, and as Rich had mentioned, you will have a full review report on this project. We also have to go to the zoning board and the conservation for the...so basically, this is a site, modifications and improvements to a developed site. The site is located at the intersection of Pine Street and Dedham Street, and you're all familiar with the project. Currently, there's a 3,640 square foot vacant building on the property. It used to be for a landscape contractor that was...that were out of the site now. Access to the site is via two existing driveways. I may share my screen, if you don't mind, if this is helpful.
Yep, you should be...I made you a copo, so you should be able to screen share.
Okay. I don't see yet, but... Let's see, um...yeah, okay. So I'm gonna go to the existing. Do you see...can you see the screen?
Yep.
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 So the site is almost two acres, 1.97 acres. Only 1.2 acres of the site that are fronting Pine and Dedham Street are currently developed. The rest of the site to the back, as you see, there's substantial wetlands to the back, and also there's the Stop River within the 200 feet of the site. So all of our improvements or site modifications are within areas that previously improved or disturbed and outside the 100...to the 200-foot buffer or the bank river of the Stop River. This is the existing building. Like, as I mentioned, it's a 6,000...3,640 square feet with some associated parking. Access is one full access driveway from Pine Street and one full access driveway from Dedham Street. This is the proposed site modifications. You can see that we're taking some portion of the landscape around the corner of Dedham and Pine to accommodate three multiple dispensing pumps with the canopy. And the reason this is placed in this position to the west of the building is to be outside the 200-foot buffer of the Stop River. To the north of the building would be the underground fueling tanks, and I just wanted to let you know that, you know, the tanks are double-walled with full 24-hour monitoring. This is required by state fire regulations, and the piping system with the fire suppression and all the fueling system would be in full compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. Access would remain from Dedham Street with the full access driveway would remain. The difference on Pine Street, which this came up with the Fire Department and the Police Department for safety issues, they didn't want a left turn from the site into Pine. And what we did, we introduced a raised island in the middle, and we redesigned the driveway to be right turn in, right turn out. So parking would be along the existing building. Parking would be in compliance with the zoning bylaws. For the parking requirement, the number of parking spaces and loading. Lighting would be in compliance with zoning, and we would do...we will do some drainage improvements to accommodate the additional impervious surfaces. And again, you have a...we have a peer review for the stormwater, but we're holding off on this because we wanted to go through all the boards, get all the comments, revise the plans once, and go back to the board. So I think this is...will be more efficient way to address the comments. I have a lighting plan. On the lighting plan, basically, the site was developed previously, so we do have a water connection on-site. We do have an existing septic system on-site that can accommodate the proposed use. And as I mentioned, will be some modification to the storm...to the stormwater system to accommodate the additional pavement, and will be in compliance with Mass DEP standard for stormwater. And again, we go through this with conservation. I have a landscape plan. I'm showing the landscape plan on the plans, and also you can see the template for the fuel truck, just to make sure that it'll be easily accessed to...access to the site in and out without any issues or traffic...yeah, traffic issues. I have some details for this. This is the proposed floor layout of the building. Basically, it's a convenience store with walk-in cooler and freezer with the two bathrooms and some retail shelvings, and will be part of the floor. I think we're not 100% sure who's gonna be there, but there'll be some kind of food service and more like a deli, not a full cooking or frying, or it'll be just mostly like cold cuts or sandwiches. The canopy, as I mentioned, will be to the west of the building, and to the canopy would have an A-frame roof with the metal roof to complement the existing building. And we tried to keep...to maintain all the architectural details of the building. I know the building is kind of like a nice feature on the site, and that was my first...when I first met my client, my first reaction was, we need to take that building down in order to accommodate. And then he said, no, 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 you don't understand. This is like a landmark. We need to keep that building, and we have to work around it, and that's what we did. So basically, we're trying to maintain the architectural characteristics of the building to the extent practical, and then tie the proposed canopy to it. I do have a rendering that shows where the canopy on-site with the existing building and the site improvements. And again, this is kind of introduction to the project to get...feed some feedback, some reaction from you, and then again, we'll be going full speed with this once we get the peer review comments, and we'll address those comments. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Is an image of a fire truck in the upper-left-hand corner of one of the drawings taking turns, is that actually from the Fire Department, or is that an assumption that it's 25 feet on center for the wheels? Probably didn't speak louder. What drawing is that?
I'm gonna go through it. That's the landscape.
Yeah. Just wondering if that's real or just some assumptions around that?
No, that's the template. That's the bumper, the overhead bumper.
Okay.
Yep.
And the gray area is that truck passing through the site?
Yes, including the overhead bumper, not just the wheel.
Okay.
So there shouldn't be any issues with any cars parked on the site or any access.
Yep. And to that point, I think one of the things when we had those initial meetings with staff, as Hal mentioned with the Fire Chief, Police Chief on Pine Street, that island will be raised to a height so the fire apparatus can go over it, but yet, if you will, structural deterrent for people to try to do left turns out of there, so... Because actually, the owner themselves is...probably as you drive by there, you know, he's had to kind of block things off. People try to cut the corner. So again, it's something we want to try to prevent that pass-through traffic, but also take lefts in there and lefts out. And Rich, what does trigger a traffic study? Not that I'm looking for a traffic study, I'm just...we talked about this before. Sometimes it's that we keep adding straw to the haystack and then something bursts, and it seems like a small project. But this is an intersection that I'm sure it'll have some impact on the traffic going through there. Although, right across the street was a store as well that shut down a short time ago. That plaza hasn't done well for convenience stores right in that intersection, but I could see a number of things opening up right around there.
I would say this has a higher potential for...to generate trip traffic versus that other store, because this is a filling station.
Yep.
Great. Especially across the street from Four Kicks. Yep.
If I may, I think part of the application, I'm not sure if you received the...we did the traffic impact statement analysis. I mean, we looked at the trip generations from the site with the existing building that used to, which really didn't generate much. I think it generated like eight trips during the peak hour, because the nature of the build...the nature of the business. And then we looked at the trip generations from a gas station, and I have it in the report. There will be an increase, but that increase, we go back to the ITE, and I think, if you're all familiar with gas stations, most of the gas stations are not traffic destinations. So gas stations are not traffic destinations. People don't drive from town to town to go get gas. I think most of the people that will go to the site are people who either work in town or live in town. They drive in by. So 65% of that traffic is what we refer to as pass-by traffic. I did present that, and I think it's with the...I'm sure it's gonna be presented to the peer review, and they'll have a chance to look at it and make any recommendations. So...
Which they haven't done yet.
No, but I was gonna say, just down the street, we have potential for a lot of housing, and so that entire area between increase in housing, medical center, that intersection itself, if it fully got built out and everything's occupied. But what triggers it? Would it be the...maybe the housing, the development down the street?
Well, the housing's definitely gonna trigger the traffic.
They have to do it anyway.
Yeah, they always do a traffic review.
So would they consider these other build-outs?
They would.
Okay.
Yeah, so typically, part of the process is when they do a traffic analysis, they'll reach out to look at projects that have been previously permitted but haven't been constructed yet. And then, of course, there may be some that are in the queue to do a background to see what those projects are. And in fact, the 40Bs have already done that, so they're aware of these projects coming in. To Hal's point, the peer review will be done on this. If there's something specific, we certainly could have it take a look at, but the things that came up, at least internally, was the in and out of here in terms of the site as it relates to Pine Street and Dedham Street for both people on-site, you know, users, and then exiting the site. But if there's something else, certainly could have them look at it.
Yeah, I mean, this is...it's an interesting one from a traffic and transportation perspective, because to Hal's point, that's not gonna generate a bunch of new trips as a gas station. It's not a destination, but it could have a pretty significant impact on the flow of traffic there, given the uses around it and how you're gonna potentially be diverting people in the right-in, right-out, you know, side of it. So I think it would be really interested to kind of see what comes back once Beta starts to review some of that traffic impact.
I also think there'll be an increase in pedestrian traffic, just walking back and forth to convenience stores, happens on Route 1. Looks like there's a little subculture taking place with the old motels and people streaming up and down the streets, but...because it's just because of the proximity, and it's gonna be convenient to walk up and down the street to get to a convenience store.
Yep. Yeah, I will say that that is something that's been identified in terms of already with the 40Bs, because we expect, and hopefully, you know, that people will be walking, so that'd definitely be part of that analysis, but... In these current plans, we have no sidewalks considered. There's a sidewalk already on Pine Street. It looks...oh, very small in the rendering, yeah. Yeah. There's not a sidewalk on Dedham Street. No. There's a...well, I shouldn't say that. There's a sidewalk not in front of the site on Dedham Street.
Yeah, there is across the street, though.
But it's across the street, yeah.
We'll be happy to tie in the sidewalk from Pine Street to the building, so, I mean, something there. I'm sure this...something might come up with the peer review for the site plan, so...
Yeah, I think the question would...something to think about, whether the sidewalk, if you wanted the sidewalk along the Dedham Street section, then...
I would say yeah, because that's where a large amount of our development's gonna end up being, is on that side.
Yeah, so carry along the fringe along Dedham Street.
Yep.
We can look at that.
And then to get to the sidewalk that's across the street, I can't remember right now, do we have a crosswalk there already that's already painted at that set of lights?
There is a crosswalk.
There's a call-out for one.
Yes, yes, there's a crosswalk, I believe, yeah.
Is there?
Yeah.
I think I would know. I drive by it five times a day. Don't look.
Showing that the picture I have up on the screen, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can tie the Pine Street to the building.
Yes. I mean, it would be...at some point, it'd be nice to have a sidewalk on the other side of Pine Street, too.
Yeah.
To tie back to Four Kicks.
Right. So for me, that's a big thing, is sidewalk consideration here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or pedestrian pathway identification. It doesn't necessarily...based on the site layout, it doesn't necessarily have to be a wraparound sidewalk around the corner, right? Because like, you start to really limit the vegetation and the visibility of the aesthetic of what's currently there. And so maybe, does it become less of a rounding of that kind of like green landscaped area on the entrance on the left? And do you have like a pedestrian cross or walking area that kind of like hugs that natural curve or...and then extends towards the Pine Street sidewalk that's been built? And then it's just denoted with like diagonal lines on the floor or something like that? But something to the effect that would denote a safe path of travel for pedestrians would be my consideration.
Yeah, you're almost sort of thinking about almost a straight line from the cross, the intersection to the...you know, so it's a short path for somebody to walk to the store?
Yeah, I mean, you want to be careful and not traverse them directly in front of the pumps, though.
No, I know.
We can hug the curb maybe with like a three-foot crosswalk with striping or something. We can look at this.
Yeah. We don't need to solve for it. See what makes the most sense.
We know what you're saying.
And then, not a requirement, but another consideration would just be bike marking.
They did have a little bike rack on the...
We do.
The south side.
Where is that?
It wasn't very large, but there is a little bike rack. Is that called out?
You have better eyes than I.
I saw it on sheet.
It should be on the site plan. I'll tell you exactly where they're at, yeah.
I was looking for signage, and then I saw it, because...
Good catch. And the...
It's not that page. It is...okay, sheet.
Against the building, sheet number four.
On the PDF, page four, yeah. Page four of the PDF. It's on the southwest corner of the building. It's a little...just a little line, and then there's an arrow pointing to it, says bike rack. So on... Yes, please, thank you.
It's right here, this little bold line.
Oh, now I see it. Perfect.
Bike rack's way over there, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any plans for any like air units? Where is that gonna be located?
We don't...we don't, but I can...I can look into it if...
It's not a requirement. It's not...
No, I know, but...
I'm just curious if that was something that you were planning for, like an air-filling station?
Certainly, we can accommodate, the site is big enough.
We did have quite a discussion on EV charging stations.
Yeah, we do have two potential future EV...with infrastructure for two EV charging stations, so...
Good.
Okay.
And then for any new berm, I think, you know, our preference is usually for monolithic as opposed to Cape Cod.
So it should be a monolithic Cape Cod?
Yeah.
Yeah, monolithic Cape Cod.
I believe when this building was for sale a while back, there was like an apartment tucked away in it somewhere. Is that...is that still a part of this building? I'm pretty sure that little area on the side...
I don't think so.
There was.
Really?
Yeah. Is this gonna be a mixed use or is this all commercial?
No, that's not a mixed use. No, I think there was like some kind of break area in the back. I don't think it's a living space. No, that's not a mixed use. No, I think there was like some kind of break area in the back. I don't think it's a living space, but they did have like a small break room with a microwave and a fridge. I don't.
Pretty sure someone was living there.
Yeah. There's no showers, so I'm not sure what they.
Okay, it looked very homey.
Age 12?
Yeah, I think it was part of the office, the office was in the back, because I think it was a contractor that maybe ran the business out of there, so I'm not sure what.
It was transit scene.
For the employees or?
There's a refrigerator and a sink.
Yeah, there was a, yeah, like a half bath and a break room with a sink and, yeah.
But not mixed use, so that's.
No.
And then, so the other part of this was around signage, right?
Yeah.
Where's the sign going to be located?
The sign is going to be on the west side of the driveway of Dedham Street, but so as far as location, I think we, I don't know if you can see my, this is where the sign is going to be, but more or less now we're looking at this, we might be moving it to the intersection where if we can place it in a way where it could be visible from both Dedham Street and Pine, that's ideal, but again, the location of the sign would be in compliance with zoning. The, so, but as far as the size of the sign, this is what we're, we're asking for the bunch of the special permits relating to the signs for, for the height, the square footage, and the internally illuminated. And the price sign, we would like to have it digital, as you all know, gas stations prices basically change on a daily basis, so it would be more, I don't think anybody does the the, the, the numbers anymore with, with the latter, so I, I think that's what we're asking for, digital, for the, for the price sign. I have a detail of the sign on, let me go to sheet.
Eight, is that eight?
Eight.
Five or eight, can't read it.
Talk to me a little bit about the co-brand logos that are planned.
I mean, at, at this time, definitely it's, it's going to be some kind of brand. I, I think the applicant is here with me tonight. I'm not sure if, you know, I mean, if he has any contract yet with anyone, but I don't believe so. I mean, we, we would have to go through the permitting before we do anything, but.
But we're looking at like a possible Subway-Duncan kind of co-brand situation?
Probably, most likely, yeah, yeah. If not, he might be running the store himself with some cold cuts or something like that, but most likely would be, ideally would be to get, yeah, somebody like Subway or, yeah.
Or equivalent.
Jersey mics.
Yeah.
Subway's up the street, so.
Dunkin' and Subway are both with the other gas station.
Hence why I named both of those.
Yeah.
I think the franchise part of those businesses might not allow that.
Yeah. The sign on the building is not illuminated. Internally illuminated.
And then, so as far as like the street sign, from an internally illuminated perspective, you're looking at light bulbs with a kind of like an acetate in front of that?
The, the street sign?
Yeah, so like, not the digital sign piece, but like where the star logo is. That, you said it's going to be internally illuminated?
Yeah, it'll be internally illuminated, yeah.
And so it's just going to be like light bulbs and then it's a transparent like acetate in front of that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I don't have any more questions, I think. You know, this is pretty straightforward. I'm looking forward to seeing what Beta has to say about this from a peer review perspective. Curious on how this does its EBA from a special permit perspective tomorrow, so if you don't mind following up via email, just to give.
So next week, special permit, kinds of it, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome. Any questions remaining from the board? Anybody in the audience? Anybody on Zoom?
The excavation is only where the pumps are and where tanks are, that's it.
Well, no hands raised, right?
All right, hearing none. Thank you for your time and looking forward to seeing how this develops.
Thank you.
Motion to, what's the word in you?
Continue?
Continue, thank you. Looking for a motion to continue the hearing for One Pine Street.
To August 12th?
August 12th.
At 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM. Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, thanks.
All right, we've got a 7:15 for 28 Union Street.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law Section 40A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaw Section 310-6.13. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025 at 7:15 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, relative to a special permit application for property located at 28 Union Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, T-Mobile LLC of Norton, Massachusetts, is proposing to install three new wireless telecommunications antennas on the water tank with associated equipment. The property owned by the town of Norfolk and is located in the B1 zoning district, reference assessor's map, 14 Block 41, Lot 27. The application and plans are available for public inspection on the town of Norfolk website or in the Norfolk Planning Board Office during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday.
Awesome, thank you. Rich? Motion here? Anything you want to add?
No, not, not for this, actually.
So essentially, this is the addition, we're not taking anything off, we're not replacing anything, this is net new? And.
There is someone.
Yep, we have Adam Wolford online.
Adam on Zoom. Adam, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Awesome, perfect. You want to tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure, so I guess the first thing I want to correct is, this is actually an antenna swap. So no additional equipment is going to be added, they're just swapping and replacing. I'm going to share my screen.
Oh, yeah, let me, let me let you in. All set, Adam.
So are you dropping some LTE equipment to put the 5G up?
So it's, there's already 5G there, this is more being done as like a capacity issue. There's more traffic in close areas of the cell site, so the new equipment will be able to handle the increased customers in close vicinity to the cell site. Hang on one second, let me just pull up the screen. Sorry about that, trying to find this, um, my computer.
No worries. Would it be helpful if we brought it up on our side?
Sure.
All right, Betsy, can you do that?
I got it.
She can, I think.
I got it up there.
Yeah.
Can we send that?
Is sheet A4?
Well, if you want to start, start on the title page, that works.
Okay. All set. Adam, I have it up on our screen here, so you, you, okay, there you go.
Okay, so I'm just going to do a brief summary of the scope of work, so T-Mobile, they have, this is an existing cell site, they're proposing to remove three antennas, install three new antennas, install three new radioheads, three new hybrid cables, and three, actually, excuse me, remove three hybrid cables and then install three new hybrid cables. Removing one equipment cabinet from the ground and install two cabinets on the ground along with a utility post with a safety light, and then remove all the unused cables and equipment. So as far as the scope of work, it does stay within the 6409 guidelines, meaning the footprint of the cell site isn't changing and the height of the antennas isn't changing. This is very much an antenna swap, so there's no additional equipment being installed. As I mentioned before, this is being done for capacity reasons. There's a increase in customers in close vicinity to the cell site. Right now, T-Mobile, they're doing, they're doing this with several cell sites nationally, and it's based on priority, and this is one of the ones they've chosen for this year to upgrade. If you want to scroll down to, okay, yeah, that works, that's kind of an aerial of the cell site. You can see what it looks like, where the antennas are, and as I mentioned before, there's no additional antennas. If you want to scroll to the next page, please. Yeah, so on the left, that's the existing equipment, and then on the right, that's what's being proposed, so you can see the footprint of the actual equipment area, is it being changed, and you see the two new cabinets on the right. Next page, please. So on the top on the left, those are the three, you'll see the proposed equipment and the proposed radioheads. It says like the model name, it's blurry on my end. But you can see those are the dimensions for the proposed equipment, and you can see the cabinets on the belt bottom, and then you see the specs for the proposed cabinets as well on the ground. You want to scroll to the next page, please? Yeah, it's a kind of a view of the water tank if you're standing next to it. You see the antennas, like I, like I mentioned before, there's no increase in the amount of antennas on this particular cell site. You can see the cabinets kind of on the very bottom towards the center, on the left, that's like the equipment area. And you also can, it's blurry on my end, but you can also see the utility post that I referenced, it's about 10 feet high. But as far as the scope of work, this is a very basic scope of work, it's a existing cell site, it's an antenna swap, there's no, like big, huge changes with the actual equipment here. It's very, like I said before, it does stay within the 6409 regulations.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Out of curiosity, what's the outage during the swap? Or is there no outage?
You say outage, how long is the cell site going to be out for?
Yeah.
It's very brief, the actual antenna swap. They, they have a temporary equipment there to handle putting the actual antennas on the water tank, so there wouldn't be that long of an outage. I would say like at the most, maybe a couple hours.
Okay. Any questions on Zoom or in person?
I'll be here.
All right, so with that, I'm motion to close the public hearing for 28 Union Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so how are we feeling?
Pretty straightforward, yeah.
All right, just want to move to a vote?
Yep.
Draft decision is in your.
The draft decision, number seven, still says the 1992 master plan. Not that that really impacts our approval, but just as a heads up.
I saw that. Is that the date of the original master plan, though?
Yeah, but the we did change it at town meeting, but we haven't got.
Oh, for the form?
We haven't got the official back from the AG yet. If you want to take a chance, we can just put current master plan, because that's what it was changed to.
Right, so I, so down below, it says, you know,
It complies with the current.
Consistent with the master plan, it said, it did say the 2007 master plan. I took the date out and I just said master plan as most recently updated.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
So it's just in that one, was it seven you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that was the, we could put current, though. We get it, kind of like.
I don't know that it matters, I mean, the language says, and as most recently updated.
Yeah, not for this, I was just, we were trying to make updates.
I think in future decisions, we audit that.
For sure.
All right, motion to approve special permit application decision number 2025-06 for T-Mobile installation of, and swap out of three antennas over at 28 Union Street.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, hearing done, motion's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask you one last question?
Sure.
Is there an appeal period for this?
Yeah.
There is, I'll have this filed with the town clerk tomorrow, so it'll start tomorrow, Adam. I'll send you a copy.
Okay, it's 20 days.
20 days.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Adam. All right, Rich, do you want to do this in any particular order, or you want to do it straight?
Actually, yeah. Not as listed on the agenda.
All right, where are we going?
So.
For what?
Jess Delaney's here for 79 Pine Street. GNK collisions, request for.
Occupancy permit? Why don't you come up over here, you can grab a chair, talk into the microphone. When you get up here, introduce yourself.
Hello, is it on?
Yeah, it's online.
Okay. Yeah, my name's Jess Delaney, I'm a general contractor working at 79 Pine Street. It's a auto body shop that has been expanded. Rich, I think is familiar with the project. We are very close to finalizing everything. We've had a lot of final inspections. Bob's going to come out one last time on Thursday before he retires. And that is kind of the impetus of us trying to accelerate things. We do owe you a final plot plan?
As-built plan?
An as-built plan, yep. I submitted a draft that Sprouan Engineering has done already, but they're going to have the final any, any day now, I think, so. We're hoping to have you guys just recommend to the building department to, you know, grant occupancy and, you know, obviously pending a, pending a as-built. Definitely, and any questions I could answer, info I could provide, I'd be happy to.
So what's outstanding on the property?
Just the final.
Just the final.
Final, yeah, the fire department's been out there, they've been happy with everything, it's a big, that's a big improvement in safety for occupants and our residency response if there's ever, you know, our final electrical, final plumbing, final, everything is done, just except for the building, which we're hoping to have, you know, Bob would like to try to close this out while he's still around, he's got one more day, I know he's got tomorrow off, too, so.
Were there any findings that Bob's returning specifically to address or identified?
We just have to add one exit sign unless.
Just an exit sign?
Yeah, so it's easy enough to do, it's done already, so he can see that on Thursday. But, I mean, again, Bob's a great guy, he's been involved in this since proposal to foundation, to final, to everything, he's, he knows the project extremely well, so it's why we kind of. Yeah, I wish him luck on his next chapter, but I kind of wish he'd stick around a little, too, so.
Any questions from the board? Any concerns?
So in terms of, I think, nobody out there today, we're just looking, well, I don't see any concerns with the issue of a permanent occupancy. The site's work has been completed, just waiting on the final as-built. Beta's been out previously to do all inspections on the site drainage, which we have the reports for, so it's.
We have a peer review with them also, so.
There isn't any, I don't see any outstanding issues here.
All right, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the request for occupancy for 79 Pond Street, G and K collision.
Do we want to put it pending?
Pending.
Yeah, pending an as-built.
Pending the as-built completion.
And final, and final from.
And final building inspection.
From Bob, yeah.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, hearing done. Approved. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good call.
All right, then we can go to 28 Long Meadow Road. The property owner's here in the audience and his engineers are online to give an update. Omar, did you want to, or is it Edmund? Who wants to?
Both. Omar and.
Yeah, both. I know who wanted to speak, but.
Good evening.
Good.
I'm Omar from Sproun Engineering. I've been in contact with Richard about the project, and we just wanted to give you an update on the plans we had sent, a letter initially this week. And just as of right now, we're working on the survey, but I've been in discussions with Richard as to how to approach. We understand that there was a deadline for the project, and we're trying to do, you know, at the best we can to get any information to town planner in this case who's been contacting us and, you know, get that information to the board. We're also working with wetland scientists for the project, and there's also comments from conservation commission side of things, so we're going to be working, just trying to meet the standards from both of the, you know, the Department of Public Works and also the Conservation Commission's, as per the concerns as of the project right now.
Okay. This is 28 Long Meadow. What do we have in file for this?
So by way of just context, as you know, this was a clearing site that town staff was made aware of. We've had contacts with the property owner in terms of the clearing and then the present owner ceased assistance by the Conservation Commission. They'll be before the Conservation Commission tomorrow evening to continue on with the cease assistance, restoration plan and so forth. I did, on behalf of the board, sent out an email before about having a stormwater permit by June 23rd. We didn't get, as you know, a stormwater permit, suggested that they, you know, appear before the board just to give you a status. And I think they are aware that we talked about potentially fining if they didn't comply. They are, I know that they have gone out and done survey work as well to get the plans before the board.
So it looked like your request for compliance was by the 23rd of June.
Correct.
And so about a week and a half-ish out of that at this point?
In terms of the subject to potentially fining, so you can fine through the bylaw, and so it's up, you know, there's discretion in terms of fining. In terms of the gamut of fining, just so you know, in terms of enforcement of the bylaw, it's, each offense is a separate offense, so they don't necessarily have to be consecutive. So you can choose to fine one day and it doesn't mean the next day you have to fine. So there is some latitude in terms of that. However, for successive finings, they do need to be issued every day and then served to the property owner who's being fined. So that's just in terms of probably the process, that's the same one way or other, but that is in terms of the process finding wise. They are, the property owners here, the engineers are here, so that's a significant progress forward than we've had before. So there's some latitude in terms of how the planning board want to approach it. I think my first question, and then I'll defer to the board, but is the next meeting is August 12th, so would there be an application? I think that's one of the questions, right?
Yeah, what is the timeline for application?
Right. That's the exact question I want to ask when you're all set.
It's all paths due, so this is.
Get it.
Yeah, we get that, but what's the next due date that you're marching towards at this point in time? And I guess stepping back a little bit before that, what was the disconnect as to whether or not a permit was required in the first place? So I guess question for Omar Edmund.
At least from, oh, sorry, go ahead. Sorry, Edmund, the engineer of record here. I mean, in terms of the permit in the first place, that question is going to be for the owner, the property owner, because, I mean, obviously, we were brought in after, after all of this.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, so we have been working.
The owner was on the line.
The owner was sitting in the.
Got it, okay. So I guess the question's for you then. What was the disconnect with understanding that maybe a permit was required?
I never know how to put a permit to.
Let me go, please.
Yeah.
Can you get the?
You can sit over here too if you want, just do a quick introduction of yourself, your property.
It's clever for you, my name is owner for 28 Long Meadow. I never know I have to make a drainage style for some opening space I make because I don't do any paving, nothing. I need a park space for the trailers, for the horse trailers come and make all the turn as I never know how to do on the nets.
Got it.
I never heard before because it's all ground, all dirt, and it's not be paved or nothing.
Got it. And you understand now that there's implications with regards to stormwater drainage and all of that stuff?
Yeah, that's why I hired the engineer. He's been there for almost a week already to do all the survey. That's what exists in the problem, and that's what proposed to do one. And the proposal be the same. I don't want to put any, that's big gravel, it'd be dirt, right? The park space I need over there.
Okay.
There's no space to, I don't want to, the mayas people come to the farm, have to park all the trail in the street, you know what I mean? Because the neighbors will be tired of complaining because it'd be blocking the whole street.
Right, 100% I agree. And you've got what you need, you understand the process now, you're willing to abide by all of that, and you're confident that you'll get this done expediently.
Yeah, he's told me that's probably get it done by problems that's begin next week, middle of next week. That's what he told you, because he did a survey and whole problem, that's what exists. Have three guys were there for almost a week and a half to survey almost every single day to make sure you get every tree, get every thing in the pipeline, I mean, don't miss nothing.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And then Edmund Omar, you're confident that you'll get us what we need. Rich, were you going to put this into any sort of peer review or anything like that?
I think what we'll do is once we get it, take a look at it.
Yeah, one of the discussions I was having with Richard over email, it's the approach we're going for this project, usually you would have, you know, normal circumstances, pre-development plan. I believe, I don't know if Richard agrees with the approach we proposed, I think he did over email, but we're planning on using the state information to do the design. The one thing, just to clarify, the information that we're going to have for next week is the survey plans, so that would let us, you know, compare those two of what, you know, the record state information says and also what the current site conditions are. So from there, then we can assess, you know, what the solution for the current configuration is. Of course, this is also something that we have to prepare an agreement with the Conservation Commission, so as for the survey plans, we're hoping to have them hopefully by the end of this week, but realistically pushing early next week, so I'll be sending that information to Richard as soon as we have it. As for the design, we'll have to analyze, you know, what the conditions are, and then, you know, there's certain requirements that the Conservation Commission has, they're separate from the standard stormwater permit requirements that would require some work. So we kind of have to put these two together and come up with a plan that, you know, would appease both the stormwater regulations from the town, but also the Conservation Commission's requirements for the wet nets.
Okay, but we have a strong level of confidence that by our next meeting in August, everything will be said and done, you'll be at a place of compliance?
We'll certainly make an effort for it. I mean, without having the survey plans, it's hard for me to confidently say that we will, but we'll definitely try to.
Well, just that being, so I mean, compliance, so we'll be in a position where we will have a plan submitted in such a way that we feel, that we feel works, assuming that obviously we'll have to talk to the owner, we'll have to make sure that he is good with what we're doing, we'll be talking to Conservation and so on, but we will have plans submitted.
Okay, so.
That's what you're, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, good, good.
And so.
Yeah, so we're back to what Omar said, so obviously, just background, bunch of work was done, grading was all changed on the site, so in terms of that existing condition, it was already altered. So they went, they're using the LiDAR contours that the state has, so going back to prior to the site disturbance, do that comparison, because it's for areas that are already disturbed, so just to, so I said that that's probably the best we're going to get because it's already been altered, so, you know, so that's what we discussed over the phone, I think that was most reasonable to do, so.
Makes sense. Okay. So now I'm not in the business of wanting to find somebody on an honest mistake, and I believe that's what this was. That's my position. What's everybody on the board feeling?
Well, I just, I just want to be really clear on the submission, because Edmund said that they would submit a plan by the next meeting, but I think what we're waiting for is a stormwater permit.
Yeah.
Correct, Rich, so.
Yeah, there's a stormwater permit, well, in cool plans, but drainage calculations, what the plan is, I think it was kind of important between the two, they have a restoration plan, they need to get blessed and approved by the Conservation Commission, so that's going to be interrelated to this plan as well. The final resolution, I don't, we're not there. I will say that there is cooperation now, but I wouldn't go so far to say that.
I'm not saying that fines are off the table completely.
Okay.
I think if we're not in a good position by our next meeting, that's when we definitely discuss fining. Absolutely. I think at this point in time, we're moving in a positive direction. I don't want to sour the relationship.
Understood, yeah.
I'm assuming a new resident? Yeah, you know, so.
Yeah, no, yeah, we're talking about from now.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly, so come August at our next meeting, if there's not significant progress in the right direction, that's when we will be discussing fining.
Okay.
Yeah.
But just for.
And can I just say that obviously, as I said, we'll have plans submitted, and we have plans submitted that we feel are correct, but always in order to get our stormwater permits and so on, we're going to get comments back, because there's a back and forth process.
Yeah, we understand.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
So we feel as though significant progress means those plans will be.
Plans are submitted and the process has begun to having those discussions, comments are coming back and forth. We're not in a position where nothing's been submitted and there's no plot plan or whatever that's been requested at this point.
So they can only meet with the Conservation Committee once, which is tomorrow before they meet with us again, and is that key to anything coming back to us? Because it's not going to get done in the next 24 hours.
It is, but they've been ongoing with the Conservation Commission, that's not.
But is that approval needed to come back and provide the plan to us?
They're going to be interrelated, yes.
Okay.
Ultimate approval in the end.
I'm just wondering, because committees only meet once a month, is that going to be a problem? Because they only have tomorrow, and then there's no more ability to meet with the Conservation Committee.
I think they need, so best described is they need to get in here with a stormwater permit filed to.
To start the back and.
To start the back and forth.
To start the conversation.
Yeah.
At our next meeting.
At your next meeting, yeah.
Is that clear? Everybody is on the same page?
I'm not, sorry. So we are expecting a stormwater permit filed by the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted.
Which includes the plans.
Got it, got it. I just wanted to make sure we were all clear and on the same page. I think the only other thing I would say, you know, I appreciate an honest mistake. I think there was several communications that went unanswered between the initial notification and when we started to talk about a fine. I'm happy that you're here now and look forward to continuing to work with you, and I hope that this communication keeps up going forward.
Yeah, 100%. All right, I think we've got our marching orders.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, so let's make sure we have them on the agenda for the next meeting.
For sure.
Awesome. Next one, Rich, where do you want to go?
See you, Senator.
All right.
Oh, there's a lot there. Can we just take like a one, two-minute break?
Sure, yeah.
All right, Andrew, we're going to take a two-minute siesta.
Siesta?
We'll be. All right, welcome back. Thank you for that. We just needed a few minutes for a comfort break, not a siesta. I apologize. Nobody took a nap.
I did.
Although I really wanted to. All right. So with that, we're going on to 28 Medway Street, Norfolk Senior Center to review and vote to approve the site plan decision and stormwater management permits. Rich, you want to bring us up to speed?
Yes, absolutely. So at your, at the June meeting, the planning board had closed the public hearing. We had put together a draft, a decision for consideration, but there was a few items that need to be included in that draft version. So we have it for you tonight to discuss and vote to approve. Went back through the, what was the special permit that was issued back in 1999?
Yeah.
And then the site plan conditions and pulled out those things that were relevant in terms of points that were brought up by the neighbors in terms of the lighting, use of the property. And what, what we did in this version that you'll discuss is that there's a few more things, although all related to the senior center. For example, you know, in 2025, it does operate as emergency shelter. So we want to, you know, be clear that that, that's something that.
It's an important secondary use.
It's important secondary use. Be clear about that. You know, there are health clinics that do operate out of there that are not just for seniors only. There are for Norfolk residents too as well. So just kind of want to be clear about those things that are, that are happening at that building. Yes, it's, it's the council aging building and operates primarily for the use, but there are other things that occur there on the property that are beyond just the, the council on aging. And then addressing the lighting. The one thing we, I will say, it didn't, didn't touch in the decision, I wanted to revisit a little bit, is the whole notion of the lighting at Medway Branch and the entrance drive.
We were discussing that about maybe having lower lumens.
Yeah. I think lower lumens is reasonable, but no lighting, it would not be a good decision safety-wise.
I don't think we were talking about no lighting. Where were we?
We were talking lower lumens.
Lower lumens.
Yeah.
There, I just want to clear the air, so to speak, that lower lumens, not no lighting as it goes forward. Because there was like, I did hear like, no lighting there.
I mean, it's a, and it's an important intersection that you need to have.
Right. So spillage is not the same spillage intersecting a public way versus off, off property where there isn't a. And there is plans to complete the sidewalk from Tucker Road all the way past the landfill transfer station.
That we're pursuing, right?
Yeah. So, so there will be other pedestrian use over there. So anyway, I just wanted to make that.
Is that multimodal or is that sidewalk?
It's multimodal. So it would be bicycle. So this at, so when I say this would be from Tucker Road to the DPW, that would be multimodal. So it'd be a shared use path. Eventually, the plan would be to then carry that all the way out to Borbin Street and so forth. But this would be multimodal. Bicycle-wise, you know, if you're, you can bike on the sidewalk if you're kind of toddler-wise, but, you know, small bike user. But, so anyway, that, that was in there. And then we added some of the other standard conditions about the SWIP, the, the no listed discharge or something that property owner would sign. So, so we include that. So you go through it. Hopefully you had a chance. And I think we carried things forward that were.
So has everybody had a chance to, and so per, first question, I wasn't here on the 10th. Am I allowed to vote on this today?
Yeah, you watched.
I can, because I was, yes.
Yeah, you saw the material, previous materials.
Right. That I participated in all but at one meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can, although we didn't put your name on this.
No, you didn't. That's why I asked.
I can change it.
We'll add you, though.
We can add you.
I think you might have to.
About that. You have to sign the form.
Yeah, you gotta sign some form that said you watched the video.
Got it.
Yeah, I got, I got that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We want to presume, that's all. So we can make that change.
Okay. So going through this, any areas, you know, we'll go through paragraph, not paragraph by paragraph, but section. And I'll ask if there's anything in there we need to discuss. So procedural background, factual background, site plan findings. We'll start by number one. Anything? Nope. Section two, convenience and safety. Section three. Section four. Five.
Back to section four.
Yep.
Or number four. The version you may have seen, I just changed it today, is that no storage of fuel is planned. It originally said the Friends bus will remain stored on site, but.
This just says the buses.
I changed it to the buses because they also are GATRA, the GATRA bus.
Right.
And the Friends bus is actually owned by the town. So it's, you know, COA bus. So I changed it to buses.
Okay.
Does that sound okay, Karen?
All right.
Keep it generic.
Section five. Section six. All right. Then we have the vote of the board. We've already discussed that. Waiver requests, traffic control and analysis, that's granted. Traffic congestion control analysis, that one's granted. Drain pipe applicant waiver, 12-inch drain pipe, we have 8-inch. Next one's the slope granite edging. I think we're good there. Survey, nearest county estate found, good there. And then conditions of approval. So again, we'll go through quite a length of here. I'm gonna bucketize these. So any questions or concerns for one to five?
Hold on one sec. I'll go back up.
Do you have a hard copy in your packet, too?
Uh, I like electronic. Good.
All right. Next bulk is six through 10.
Yeah, this may be a little bit more general, but so Rich, we're, and I tried to kind of go back and forth and, and look at them when I was reviewing the permit. We basically just like lifted and shifted the old special permit conditions and.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correct, yep.
All right. Cleaning up this page, 11 through 13. All right, 14 through 19.
Um, wait a second. So 13 says the work at the site shall commence no earlier than 7:00 AM and is to end no later than 7:00 PM. And when I looked through the previous, when I looked through the settlement, it's different because it was specifically about building the actual building, you know, at the time, constructing it. But the hours were different.
What was the difference in hours?
I believe it was seven to three, but let me double check.
I think seven to seven is just what our bylaws allow me to.
Yeah, I just, so when I went through, I went through the settlement agreement, the first approval from the ZBA, and then what we were being asked to approve this time because I wanted to see what the gap, if there were any gaps. And, you know, the residents spent money and time on the lawsuit on the settlement, you know, and, and it does say in there that it, the lawsuit, I mean, the settlement is in effect until those folks move away. And they have not moved away. So I.
But the settlement was specific to the construction of the original site.
Yes. And so that's my question.
Not necessarily to this.
Right.
So that would be a question that we would have to pose to council.
Right, exactly. Because the other, it does say specifically it's for the construction of the building.
Right.
Um, but the hours were different. So just something to ask.
What were the hours again?
Seven to three.
Seven to three.
Seven to three, and we're, we're seven to seven.
Yeah.
I mean, it's also, I would imagine, not gonna be a very long project to do, you know, to pave.
Additionally, I don't know many construction companies that go past three anyway.
Yeah.
I don't know many construction companies that are actually going past three for anything more than cleanup or removing of, of stuff.
For a parking lot.
I mean, if we wanted to be very, if we wanted to be as conservative as possible, we could, we could change this to seven to three so that it, I mean, I think, my personal opinion is it doesn't apply in this situation.
That's mine as well.
But if we wanted to be conservative, we could change it.
Yeah, the only, um, suppose you could, the downside to doing that a little bit is it could affect the construction schedule.
Right. You could actually draw it out longer.
Draw it out longer. So that's kind of the.
Right.
Because the intent, which we need to work on, that's something, the next part of this is, we're gonna need to shut down the center for a period of time for the construction.
Right.
So again, it's gonna elongate it and.
My opinion is we believe that it is dated in the bylaws.
Yeah.
It is different. I mean, when I went through the document, I did point out to myself that it does say for the construction of the building.
Right.
This is not the construction of the building. It's a much shorter project. It's not that complicated.
Yep. I'm comfortable believing it as is.
Yeah, I am too. I just wanted to make a point that.
Yeah, no.
Could consider it.
Yeah.
Don't have to, though.
So returning back to 14 through 19. I mean, a lot of this, Rich, is just literally rehashing the bylaws.
It is.
Yeah.
For sure.
All right, 20 through 26. A very thorough and concise rehashing.
Right. I suppose maybe just, I'm just thinking that to your point, maybe we could almost denote like, almost like a standard condition in the, you know what I mean? Because we do carry them forward all the time. They're pretty much standard conditions. I don't know. We could talk about it.
These ones are. But then, again, going back to that settlement agreement.
No, I know there are specific ones. So we could, we could reorganize them. So it's kind of like standard condition. So Conservation.
Future thoughts, though.
Yeah, future thoughts. Like Conservation has standard condition, they have special conditions.
I think knowing that previously, and I mean, it was 25 years ago, but it's, you know, there was an approval that the residents who lived there, the abutters, believe didn't kind of follow through when they started taking down trees. Whether it was the DPW, I don't know who it was, took down trees and made dirt, parking lot, right? 25 years goes by, employees, you know, they turn over, whatever. I just think we should take whatever the approval was back then and put it into the new ones that we're not going back to previous agreements. So like, there's a 50-foot buffer on the east side of the building in there. I know that it doesn't really, it only applies because of the pavilion, but it does apply.
Well, there's a requirement for 50-foot buffer in the bylaw.
I'm just saying, everything that, everything, but in case it changes, right? Like, what if, because technically there isn't really. I mean, if we, if we're an accessory structure, you only have to be as far away from the property line as the height of the building. And that's an accessory structure, but we still have to abide by the 50 feet because the abutters still live there. And that is fine because the site plan actually has it at 55.
So.
I'm just saying, I think we should take the previously approved settlement terms and put them in here because it does apply. And we're meeting it.
I don't think, uh, is there.
Either meeting or exceeding, or.
Well, it's exceeding.
We're exceeding, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. But did, but, but what's the val, I guess I'm trying to add, what's the value of at putting it in here?
So the reason that I'm saying it is because I think it is very easy for the terms to get lost when it's in a document from 25 years ago versus that's still good, those term, that settlement is still good until those two other residents, the two homeowners move out of their houses.
I don't know. I gotta argue to the opposite because here we are 25 years later and we're having the discussion about that document.
We are, but, I mean, it had to be dug out from 25 years ago versus if we just have the latest approval, it's much easier to say, these are all the things that apply to that one site instead of not knowing that and going and digging up a parking lot.
I'll agree to disagree because the same amount of research on that property is gonna have to happen regardless.
Maybe. I just think it would save some steps. I don't know, though, because you guys do the research.
Well, I guess the thing is, the, that settlement agreement at that time was also tied to a special permit. This use is not a special permit anymore. I know that was an opinion of, but that wasn't in the settlement agreement. It tied to those people.
It is in there. It says that it is valid until they move out of the property. It's in the document that is in our folder.
Oh, I saw it.
Yeah.
And that's not the opinion of the town?
Conversation for another day.
But we could avoid potentially another lawsuit by just noting that we do, we're complying with that 50-foot buffer, right? We don't, I don't, what I don't want to do, I spent a ton of time comparing all of these documents to make sure that we weren't exposing the town and that the residents were going to be happy with our decision. And I think the only one that I see that is going to be potentially something that they aren't happy with is the math that proves we need the parking. Everything else seems to apply. It's just a matter of do we put it in the approval or not?
If there's a gap, I would, it makes sense to move it forward into this because it would tell you the, that referring back is where things become, can be a problem. Like, you know, if we miss something that's important, I would say carry it forward and put it in here.
Okay. So is the 50-foot buffer still in effect, then?
It is still in effect because of the district. So there's the, there, the provision in the bylaw.
But if the zoning.
We could, we could add it as a condition that, you know, that, that that remains. That's, I don't have.
I'm just thinking, if I was a resident, I would probably appreciate that instead of having documents from 20 years ago. And then somebody looks at the latest and then missed, something gets dug up. I mean, they were already talking about the, the lack of communication in the town because it was something that was 25 years ago. I just think if there's, if the zoning changes and that setback is no longer 50 feet for this property, we are still, we still have to comply with that according to the legal agreement until those two homeowners move. We do, we are complying with that, but is it worth putting it in the documents that we have it all in one place and we know it's there for this property until they move?
We can. But I mean, we run into, I'm sure we run into situations like that throughout town already where.
And I'm sure it's a mess.
Zoning changes have, zoning bylaws have changed, but the site plan from 20 years ago said something different. I mean.
Yeah, and then it's grandfathered in.
Right. And then it, right. But, but if, I mean, I don't see a harm of adding what you're talking about adding to it. I don't, I don't, I see no harm and it provides clarity.
Right. I'm just thinking if we just pull it forward, it might make sense.
Because you're talking about just adding one statement of a 50, the 50-foot buffer.
Because it's in the legal agreement.
Yeah. I mean, that's where I thought we had sort of left it last meeting is we were gonna be explicit as possible about some of these, even if it was redundant with zoning or, or what have you. Just so it was all pulled forward. So I, I think there's no harm in.
There's no harm.
Adding that as a condition.
Yeah, no, that, that.
What you're saying, here's, here's these conditions from 25 years ago. We meet one of them. Let's put that one here. We reviewed all of them, but we're only gonna move one of them forward.
No, so.
Into the document?
Some of them are actually, so there's only a few that are actually, that would, in my opinion, be moved forward to this project. One is the 50-foot buffer, the lighting, which we've already talked about.
Right.
So it's based on relevance. It's not just based on, we meet one out of this many. Let's move this forward.
Correct. Yeah, it would be.
No, relevant.
Relevance, for sure.
Yep. It's in the. We could pull it up and look at it if you want. It's in the. So if you, the, um.
The settlement, yeah.
Gary, what's your opinion?
There's a different version in here.
I mean, it's not gonna matter either way. It helps for clarity to have it in.
Can't search these documents.
The settlement PDF?
Yeah, this is actually not the same document that I had from the one I was looking. I mean, it probably is the same, but this is merged with other documents. The one that I had was in the May, I was looking at the May folder. This just includes everything all in one doc, it looks like. CBA approval, site plan.
It's a scanned PDF.
Yep.
Can't search.
You cannot.
Well, it's a picture.
I know. I was trying to do it earlier and I was very frustrated.
So in the interest of time, as someone's looking for that section, just to close out the review of the remaining items in here, we were up to 30.
We were up to 30, yeah.
No issues up to 30.
I got it.
Moving on, 31 through 35. Any issues with any there?
Here it is.
Hold on, Betsy.
This is, this is all standard, right? It looks very boilerplate.
Exactly.
It is.
And then 36 and 37 to close it up. And then 36 and 37, to close it up?
No concerns.
Okay. And then, obviously, we have the appeal statement, and so the question at hand is whether or not we add a statement to the effect of retaining a 50-foot buffer on the west side of the building?
I believe it's the east.
East side of the building.
It's the residential side. It is not the one that-
East, yeah.
Yeah, it's not the one that abuts the DPW.
Yeah, the east side, yeah. So, Betsy, you have the language up?
Are you looking at this, the settlement agreement here?
Yeah, where does it say the specific, the 50?
There's the lighting section. And there's the earth removal with the times. Oh, it's 7 to 3:30 is what it was before. Can't even see that.
All right, I don't see it.
I don't either.
There isn't-
50-foot buffer?
Yeah, I'm looking.
It's in, I looked at probably 12 different documents, so let me see. I'll search.
But this would be the document that it would need to be in.
Right.
For it to be relevant for the conversation at hand.
That's true. Um, I was, what I was trying to figure out was everything that we were complying with, and then what the gaps were. So it is possible that that was in the, the ZBA approval, though, I'm thinking. Let me just double check.
They got the lot, they got that.
It's a ZBA approval. It says 50 feet from the east residential side.
So not on us?
Right.
All right, so-
But we meet it.
And we already meet it, right?
We meet it. We're at 55.
We already meet or exceed it, so...
Okay, so having gone through the document, having settled the topic at hand, um, I'm going to look for a motion to approve decision number 2025-02 for the town of Norfolk Council on Aging Senior Center Parking Lot.
Parking, the numbers, very quickly, Mr. Chair.
You don't want to hold it for after the vote?
No, because, no. So... So, what I looked up this weekend is census numbers. So at the last meeting, I was talking, I mentioned that I had a number that was from the master plan, not from the census, and one of the residents called it out, rightfully so, because I was comparing apples to oranges. So I went back to the census numbers, and I looked at what it was in 2000, looked at what it was for people over 60. I looked at 2025, and then what's the forecast in 20 years from now? Because we're looking at it now, which is 20 years later, right? We don't want to have to do a parking lot project twice and go through this all again. And what I found is, although the data's a little, so in 2000, it wasn't broken out over 60, it was only 65. But even if we doubled that number very liberally, it would have been 11% over 60, okay, in the town of Norfolk. 2025 is about 21% over 60 years old in Norfolk. And then, we are expected in the next 20 years to add seven more to that, so we're almost up to 30%, right? So if we were at, say, 11% over 60 in 2020, now we are at double that, essentially. Now we're at 21, and then we're going to go up to 30. So that's three times the number of people, right? So you would think, if that's true, then we would need three times the parking. Three times the parking is 90.
Yeah. I think also the consideration of it being a second, or the secondary purpose of the site for emergency shelter is important, because you have to have space for, you know, if there's a FEMA response, or whatever, sort of like, uh, response would be appropriate to whatever disaster is occurring, right?
Right. One of the conditions from the ZBA on, in 2000, was no parking on a public way. I don't think you can enforce that anyway, but that was a condition that I, I would imagine that residents probably wanted. And by giving more parking spots, we would actually reduce the chances of having people park on that road.
Yeah, right.
So, that's it. Everything else was already covered.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So, motion on the table. Do we have a second? Or do we have a motion for it?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Yay. We got that one off.
And a little fun fact for you related to Council on Aging, now you've taken the vote. Uh, referring to the Foxborough Senior Center, um, back at that time period when this senior center was originally planned, um, there was CDBG money available to communities to construct, construct senior centers. Senior centers were deemed ineligible of funding source for senior centers, and many communities, including the town of Norfolk, tried to pursue grant funding to build a senior center for the seniors. Hence, um, kind of the, the birth, the idea and the framework for the project. The senior center in Foxborough was similarly trying, and I don't know if they got CDBG money. I can tell you, when I previously worked for another community back in that time period, many communities were chasing CDBG money. And the budget for the site and the size of these buildings were dictating a lot of the, what was being done, not necessarily at the time, because towns were not building senior centers. So this was a source for, for senior centers to be built in terms of historically. Um, so, and it would tell you that they're probably undersized right now. I'm sure if they could find a way to provide new centers, because they are, to your point, aging populations, and they're notoriously undersized to serve the needs, so... Thank you. Just want to add that to those important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. All righty.
You've done very well on the agenda. Now we'd probably go back to, uh, maybe a chance to look through the scope of work, um, if you had any particular items that kind of jumped out.
For which one?
For the town center zoning.
Got it.
I will say that the objective is, the overall objective is to provide a base standard, and then have some latitude of flexibility based on site, in terms of size, um, market absorption feasibility. So the, so that comes in the way of commercial as well as residential. The one point to consider is we, you know, we are trying to pursue sewer for town center.
Yeah.
But the concept of tying things to a density bonus necessarily, really not, might not be that achievable right now without sewer. So, just kind of bear that in mind. We could build a bylaw that's based on density bonuses, but as a practical matter, you might not be able to achieve that. So, as a, the only thing about it tonight, I'm just, that's one point, just as we go forward.
Did you say you shared this with us?
Yeah, I was just looking for that, too.
It's in, it's in the shared drive?
Is it last month's?
It was in last month's shared drive.
Not in this one?
No.
I don't see it.
Oh, my apologies, then.
It's the two-page MAPC document?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because, again, the goal, and just to give you, to let you know, the, the select board plans to open up the warrant next week.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, that was fast.
I feel like it's no rest for the weary.
Didn't I just present this down?
Like, yesterday?
So, in terms of-
I'm still not seeing it.
Um...
It's the last, it should be the last document, Town Center, District Center. Oh, God. It doesn't even say MAPC on it.
No?
No. Thank you.
Oh.
All right, I got homework. Thank you.
If you have something burning that you want to share, we, we can incorporate it now. If not, we don't have to, I'm just...
So, project launch in July, so they don't need anything from us for that?
No.
Okay. And then drafting zoning language by late August. And so we would not look at this until September?
Which puts, it gets tight.
It's very tight.
We always try hard, right? Have a goal. I don't-
I think your goal is more meetings.
Hmm, yes and no. Like, all, if you're, if there's something to meet on, right? I don't want to, like, you know?
Hundred percent. I hear you.
It's a target to reach. I don't know if it's going to be achievable or not. Um, but I will say, in context to this, though, the trust would really like to move forward with the inclusionary changes and not wait anymore. So I just want you to think about that, um, because we-
Can we just at least pencil in an initial review of the draft in August?
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. We will do that. I'm just saying that, you know, everything might not line up.
Can I, what? So, we're paying them to write bylaw language?
Yeah.
Do we need to do that?
We, I suppose-
How much time you got?
Can you do it cheaper? Is that what you're trying to say?
Better than 10K? I mean, it's just, it's-
We're paying them for their, we're, I mean, I'm not, I'm not endorsing this or not, but I'm just saying-
You're paying for their expertise and background.
Yeah, we're paying for their expertise, their background, and their exposure to other buy, you know, they obviously have helped other towns and communities. Now, we could do that same, we could do some of that research on our own. They just have it at their fingertips.
Yeah, from an ROI perspective, I see benefit to having them do it.
And they're going to have some insider knowledge that we, we would never be able to get, or would take us a tremendous amount of time to get that info.
It would, that's true.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way I was sort of looking at it, it's less about them sort of writing it for us and handing it off, and us just taking it. They're sort of facilitating the development of it through feedback from us in the process.
Yeah.
Like, we still maintain the, the full control over it, and our thoughts appear to be incorporated into it, but they're kind of facilitating that work.
That's a-
Yeah, it's not a turnkey. It's like, yeah. It's a collaborative effort, and they're the subject matter expert.
Since we're going to be dealing with the inclusionary bylaw for Town Center, do we want to address that townwide?
Yeah, I want to clarify. When I say that, that they want to address it townwide.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. So, the trust wants to do it, address it townwide.
It just, it makes sense to do it all at once.
I don't know if-
There's always going to be different use cases and different financials, but it's a, it's a, it's an issue everywhere in town.
Oh, yeah, definitely. No, it's definitely an issue. It doesn't, you know... That's the objective, right? We might have to kind of massage this as we go. It might just be the inclusionary that makes it. Oh, and then the B1 changes follow-up. I think the, because if we went, you know, the analysis on the inclusionary is that what we have now is on the much more intensive in terms of requirement, but the finances don't match up. I mean, I think that's... Unless you, unless you don't agree with that conclusion, I guess. When I say that, I'm talking about 20%. Anything above 15%?
Yeah. I mean, we have those numbers for downtown, but I thought we were going to try to go back to 10.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, no. We are talking about going down, but I'm saying the numbers don't pencil out to what we have on the books today.
They don't work. They're not financially feasible.
Yeah.
All right, so circling back to the topic at hand, um, scope of work, you want feedback on this now?
What's the deadline?
If you have some of the substance you want to add, I mean, we're kind of up against it, so I mean, you know.
So if not, send Rich an email-
Yeah.
Directly. Don't CC anybody on it.
Yeah.
And then Rich will coordinate.
Okay. But what, Rich, what's the deadline? End of the week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock tonight?
Nine o'clock tonight.
Nine o'clock tonight, no.
So you get out of here fast enough.
I mean, just to be fair, you probably would like to get feedback tomorrow, so that you could, you could respond by Thursday.
If you could do it by the end of the week, that's fine.
Okay.
And I can let them know on Monday.
Perfect. Awesome.
Hey.
All right, 117 Main Street.
I don't know, what do we do? We carry this forward?
That's the fire station. So, so what's the, can I ask, what's the, I mean, we already extended it, which I thought was going to be more than sufficient. What-
Yeah, so the end of July.
What changed? I mean, that's-
Nothing's really changed.
Something must have, if-
We gave them an extension till Joe-
Yeah, no, it's an extension through July 31st.
Okay.
Right.
It's just the, grass isn't all grown over there. Yeah, I don't know if you've-
We gave them, we gave them-
You've been watching it? It takes longer if you do that.
Well, we gave an extension, so what are they requesting? Another extension?
No, no.
No.
No, they got to 31st. It's okay. I don't know.
So, we're good on just letting it expire?
If we don't, you don't have another meeting until August 12th.
Right? So I, I, if I understand-
I'm not, I'm not as confident that you're going to be done by, what's today? The 8th. And we're in July.
So if I understand where, your body language, you're a little concerned that this might expire, they're not going to be done. You're thinking, hmm, if we extended this another month or two at most, you get a comfort, you know, just so there's no issues.
Yeah, so there's a comfort level. Because as the owner, if I was the owner, looking out the side, I'm thinking, yeah, I don't think I'm comfortable yet, the way things all look, right? To give them, the contractor, the-
Yeah, okay to go away.
Yeah, okay. I'd rather just get it to the next meeting in August than-
Yeah. So what usually happens, right, is, right now, they're doing the work on the grass, and then the sun is going to kill it all, and then they're not going to be ready until September, when they can reseed. So do we just want to delay it until, just extend until September, which is probably what's going to happen anyway?
Give them two months, basically.
That's a better solution, actually, in some ways, because, I don't know, if you drove, if you, I mean, I, I don't know.
What's still outstanding?
It's just landscape. I mean, as far as I know, I don't, I don't think there's anything else left.
The as-bills are done?
The as-bills are done. I will say, I'm a little, I haven't dug too deep in this, but the basin doesn't seem to be free of water. It's in the front of, I don't know how much.
I've driven by there, but I've never, like, like, looked into it like that, but, yeah.
Hopefully, like, if we could do the, if you could do the August just to be safe, because I want to do a little, um-
Why not just do September, then? Give it two months?
September.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the temporary occupancy for 117 Main Street, the Norfolk Fire Station, until September 9th.
So moved.
Well, September 10th, 2025. Let's do that.
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
That'd be good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, let's remove, review and approve the 610-25 meeting minutes.
You're on.
No worries.
What, I don't think I've done this before. What do I do?
So you, uh, motion to review and approve the meeting minutes for June 10th, 2025?
I call for a motion, or?
Yeah, you just get it.
Take a motion to review, to approve the meeting minutes from the 610-2025 meeting.
It's removed.
The second?
Second.
Call in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Beautiful.
Congratulations.
Beautiful.
I don't, I don't have an update on Shire.
Well, let's go to fee schedule first.
Oh, okay. Oh, where's that? I don't know.
Propose amendments to fee schedule, schedule public hearing for August 12th.
Are we going to do that, then, or are we going to, are we going to wait?
Well, we can do it now. We're not ready, though. I'm not ready.
You're not ready? Are we going to do a public hearing in August?
Yeah, we'll have to. No, I don't think so. Yeah, we'll have to, no, I don't think so.
No? Okay, never mind.
This is something that we eventually have to get the town to vote on to accept it.
No, no, it's just, it's the board.
Okay.
It's just, I, I don't feel.
As long as we don't have to get in on the warrant, I'm fine.
No, no, it's not a warrant thing, no. It's just.
All right, and then you said nothing on Shire. All right, Engineering Consulting Services RFP update, it was awesome.
There you go. Hey, you just had it tonight, so.
Yeah, no, it was, it was a good conversation. Obviously, we only had two respondents to that. Both came in, you know, really fighting for the position. Great Q and A participated by myself and Dan and a couple gentlemen from the ZBA. Remind me the names?
David Axberg and Mike Brogan.
Perfect, awesome. Um, a lot of good conversation in, in both of the interviews. Uh, we got some homework to take care of now and, um, should have some updates soon. I do good.
Nice, excellent. Dan, good, nice.
Yeah, no, I think they were both, you know, qualified applicants and there's a couple of follow-ups that, that we'll have to, to review.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, the consultant would work on behalf of the planning board and like coordinate that review. Um, and then in addition to that, they would do peer reviews on behalf of the Conservation Commission when something needed conservation review.
And a whole list of other services should we need then?
There's a whole list of other services. I might.
Soil testing.
Soil testing, yes, yes, so. That's good, thank you.
No problem. Discuss the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for the fall special town meeting.
That's just a mental reminder. Kind of already did.
All right. Any other updates?
No.
All right, so, uh, just, it's summer, 8/12, still good with everybody?
I'm going to have to join, we're probably.
That's fine.
Chad doesn't have to worry about any of this.
Nope, we do have to thank Chad for.
Is this your last?
Is this your last one?
It.
Oh, man! And we didn't get cupcakes or anything?
I didn't.
It might end at nine, this is ridiculous.
It's, it's like a gift.
It's our gift to you.
We can push it till 10.
No, 11:30. We get a good, Walgreens needs to be closed by the time we leave.
Seriously, though, um, I just, I'll say thank you. I learned a lot from working alongside you these past couple of years. You were on the board when I decided to join as an associate member, um, and it's just been awesome watching you go through from, you know, vice chair when I joined to chair and then, uh, you know, you kind of handling, handing it over to me. Appreciate that. And, um, you know, hopefully this is, just, see you later.
That's, yeah, that's exactly right. Thank you. And, yep, it'll be a see you later.
All right.